All right, it's nine o'clock and I'll call to order the October 25th meeting of the Saline County Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks? I was trying to say Sparks and Bidrickson together, sorry about that. Commissioner Bidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White.
Now if we could all stand for a flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now comes a portion of the citizens' input where citizens may speak unlimited to three minutes on business pertaining to Saline County that is not on the agenda. Anyone who wishes to speak? Good morning.
I'm Icee Salina, Kansas. I was, we had some citizens concerned about Saturday, there was a busload of illegals that was dropped off at Harbor Freight, and we was wondering if the county commissioners knew anything about that, or if the sheriff's department was notified. We had witnessed that there was a big white busload of illegals being dropped off at Harbor Freight, and there were vehicles there ready to pick them up, and citizens are wanting to know where, who's picking these up, who's making the arrangements to be dropped off here, and where are they going? And with crime up here in Saline County and Salina, we just have a lot of questions, wanting to know if any of you are aware of this.
I'm not aware of that, but how do we know that they were illegal?
There was some people there that saw that they had backpacks and suitcases, and they were, they were pretty sure they were illegal because they were not Americans.
I share Commissioner Shadwick's concern, and that was going to be my question too. How do we know that, and I mean, people walk down the street every day with backpacks on and things like that. We haven't heard, we haven't heard a thing about that that I know of.
We can follow up. I know that there's a bus that usually originated on South Santa Fe that...
Well, this was an out-of-state bus.
Right, right, and, but it has, I think it's weekly or bi-weekly that it comes and leaves Salina, taking people back to visit family and then bringing them back to Salina. I don't know if that's the same bus, but we can follow up.
Okay, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Dalton McDowell, Salina. The city is in the middle of negotiations that are going nowhere with your, with towing, and I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but sheriff's office uses the city's towing rotation, so when all heck breaks loose, which it very likely could, the way the city's pushing with their agendas, it's gonna come back to you guys too. You guys are gonna get dragged into the middle of this. I just thought maybe you guys should look into that. I know, I don't know if, I know the sheriff's probably aware of what's going on, but it could turn into a headache for you guys as well.
And just a quick question, the towing of...
So when the, so if there's an accident that the sheriff's office works, or they arrest somebody and they impound the vehicle, you guys are, with the, with the city being the dispatchers for Saline County, the city has a towing contract with five towing oper, five towing companies in town, and they respond to the sheriff's office request for a tow truck if the, if they don't, if the individual doesn't have a towing company of preference, or it's an impound, the sheriff's office will call their on-call wrecker, which is whoever the city uses as an on-call wrecker at the same week, and it rotates every week. It starts at Monday, it starts Monday morning and it ends Monday, the following Monday at 8:00 a.m. But there is, you might get dragged in the middle of this mess.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of approval of public forum agenda as presented, approval of county commission minutes for October 11th, the Central Kansas Mental Health Center letter of support, Salina Presbyterian Manor letter of support, approval of payroll, approval of accounts payable, 2022 jail staff retention incentive pay schedule, approval of cemetery gas transaction confirmation for 11-1, 2022 through 10-31 of 2023, and the JHR change order for juvenile hall remodel. Are there any items on this consent agenda that the commission wishes to address?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would like to have a brief conversation regarding items number seven, eight, and nine, if we could, before, before I'm willing to go with approval of these.
All right. We'll, we'll pull seven, eight, and nine for a discussion and then go on with our consent agenda.
Okay, number seven, which is the jail retention, jail staff retention incentive pay schedule, and it's here and it's given out in four. Am I to remember that on October 11th, 2022, was when we gave approval for this pay contract, that we have said yes to that? I couldn't find my minutes on that. Is that an accurate statement, Hannah, or Phil, or Marilyn?
Yes, so the memoranda of agreement with both the escape unit and the sheriff's unit were approved on the 11th. That's correct.
Also, it says to accommodate payroll staffing workloads, our proposal to pay as follows, 11-4, 11-18, 12-2, and 12-16. Payroll staffing workloads, what, what does that mean necessarily?
We would prefer to have them for consecutive payrolls. It just makes it much easier to put in a start date, a stop date, pay the amount each pay period, instead of having to maybe spread it out over every other pay period.
I still am against paying all of this within one month time. I mean, somebody can work for a month and collect $5,000 from us, and it just troubles me there. I don't have a problem with the current work staff getting that money at that time, but I guess the, the barn door is closed now.
That's what this one is for. This is the retention one for the current staff.
Only for retention?
We did change the hiring incentive to be paid out over a one-year timeframe.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm, I'm not clear on that. That's, was, that will take care of that for me. Number eight was the approval of this cemetery gas transaction confirmation. I remember last year we got stuck with a huge gas bill on one or two of our facilities, if I'm not mistaken, and what, I mean, there's a lot of information here on this very small print. What does that, what have we done, or what's, what's happening here in terms of that's gonna save us money, or is it a different rate, or what does all of this mean?
So you'll recall that in February of 2021, there was a cold snap throughout the middle of the country that really impacted gas rates for a lot of different entities, including at three county facilities, the sheriff's office, the senior center, and the health department. And when we got to looking into that and why that had occurred, we noticed that the contract was very old and not accurate, and so we cleaned that all up a year ago, and this is just the extension of that for the next 12-month period. The, the only change is that the transportation rate goes up by seven cents per mm BTU, and I, I had an extensive conversation with symmetry about that. The transportation charge represents a small fraction of what we actually pay because we pay the, we pay for the cost of gas at a set rate, and then we pay for, which varies monthly, and then we pay for any overage from our expected use at a separate rate, and then we pay this transportation charge. And so this increase represents less than a 1% increase in the cost of gas for this coming year. The gas industry is still sort of trying to settle out from that incident back in February of 21. And, you know, I think we talked about this last year, about we will probably need to take a more serious look at this next year, at the end of '23, as we prepare for, you know, firing up the new jail, and we'll have substantial changes in our gas needs, and so this is just the, sort of the bridge to get us to there.
So we really haven't negotiated a...
I should mention that, I should mention that we also did, as part of our contract negotiations a year ago, we also did get a credit of more than $10,000 towards those past charges.
But the bottom line is, this doesn't really change our rates to speak of, other than the 1% you were talking about. Is that, is that, okay. Finally, on the jail order, change order for juvenile hall, and it looks like it's $5,400, and that is for fire sprinkler. Can you elaborate on that just for a sec, for a little bit?
Yes, so the fire sprinkler that is installed in the juvenile hall center did need to be inspected. It had been turned off for, you know, quite some time. So we did have a company come out and inspect it and give us some options as far as either repairing it or decommissioning it. Their recommendation was to decommission it, so that is the proposal that is in front of you for the change order.
Does this repair it also and replace it?
No.
This is just to take it out?
This, yeah, this is to decommission it and to take out the sprinkler heads.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
While, while we're on that, Hannah, part of the expense of the new courts was the installation of sprinklers?
Correct.
So planning and zoning, city planning and zoning required us to add sprinklers to the third floor, but that's not a requirement over at the offices.
That is correct.
All right. And it's three, what, over $3,000 to cap a water line?
Correct.
All right, any other questions?
I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried. We now move into our action items. Item number one.
Emergency Management Performance Grant 2022-22-34.
Morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commissioner. I am here to request to apply and if awarded, accept the FY22 Emergency Management Performance Grant. This grant is used to enhance and sustain emergency management in Saline County. We use it to ensure that we're still providing all hazards approach to emergency management, and it helps fund the deputy director position that we have in our office. This grant is a 50-50 match, so we use the salary of myself and the admin assistant, as well as our emergency management budget, to offset the 50% match for this grant. We have been told that the amount that we will receive in 2022 is similar to that of what we got in '21, which was a little bit north of $35,000. I do, I am required to submit this grant to the state by October 34, 31st, pardon me, and I request that you guys sign the grant and allow me to apply and, if awarded, accept the funds.
Questions of the commission? Questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the 2022 EMPG application.
Second to motion.
All right, it's been moved to second, and we approve Emergency Management Performance Grant 2022-2022-34. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number two.
Memorandum of Understanding with Mended Hearts Counseling LLC 2022-38.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I am here this morning to request that you approve us going forward with a memorandum of understanding with a counseling service called Mending Hearts out of Abilene. We have been a partner for a number of years with Central Kansas Foundation here in Salina, and they assist us with providing a batter's intervention program at our agency. Batter's intervention program is something that is required for clients who have been convicted of domestic violence. If they are assessed appropriately for the group, they're required to complete that group, and by extension of that, we are required to have someone as a director that has the correct credentials and are licensed with the Behavioral Health Board. CKF, over the last few months, has asked us if they could transition out of that contract that they've had with us for a number of years. They are, you know, very focused on, on drug and alcohol rehabilitation, and they, they didn't feel like they had the time to commit to this. So Paula Morgan in our office, who is our program provider, cultivated a new person to come in and take over that position as being the director. Paula actually provides the group to our clients and other clients in the community, but she needs someone who has the correct credentials to oversee that program. So we are asking to go forward with a memorandum of understanding that would allow us to go under a contract with Mended Hearts Counseling. The alternatives for action are that you approve the MOA with Mended Hearts Counseling, or that you deny the request. Staff recommendation is that you approve the MOA and allow me to sign that memorandum of understanding. This does not have any type of budget impact. We already have budgeted for that program throughout the year in our behavioral health grant funding, so it has no budget impact neither to our agency or to the county budget either one. I am here available for questions if you have any.
Michelle, what does MOA stand for? Is that a typo?
I think that when Sheri typed that up, she put in memorandum of agreement. I think that's how ours actually reads, it's memorandum of agreement. I would add that County Counselor Mike Montoya has already approved the legalities of the contract as well.
Any other questions? Questions or comment from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the Memorandum of Understanding with Mended Hearts Counseling LLC.
Did we have a second?
Yeah, he's second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Memorandum of Understanding with Mended Hearts Counseling LLC 2022-38. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, we now finish up our action items. We now move into informational items. Item number one.
Diesel Emissions Reduction Act Grant 2022-24 with Darren Fischel, Roden Bridge Administrator.
Morning, Darren.
Good morning, commissioners. The Kansas Department of Health and Environment has reopened their Diesel Emissions Reduction Act grant funding for non-highway diesel equipment. If you remember, this is the funding that we used to replace an excavator a couple years ago. You know, I've come here to see if this, the Board of County Commissioners wish to pursue this funding. We have two tractors at our facility. This is a Case GX90 that we use to mow our yards and some right-of-way. Next slide, please. This is a 1969 John Deere that we use to pull our sheep's foot roller. The iron meter doesn't work on it. The old Case tractor has 9,000 hours. My plan would be to use the funding to replace the mowing tractor, because due to this funding, you have to destroy the equipment, and this piece of equipment, I think we could get more from Purple Wave for. So I would use, like to purchase, next slide, please. Would use the funding to purchase this tractor, which would do both. So we would be replacing two pieces of equipment with one piece of equipment, but because of the funding, you can only put one piece of equipment on there, but the, the idea is to replace those two pieces of equipment with these one. Reimbursement is 25%. The new tractor is roughly about $120,000. That's with tacking on to the Kansas Department of Transportation's bid for these tractors. They're, they're originally about $150,000, but if we tack on to their bid, it's 120. So that would leave Saline County's portion at 90,000, with the state of Kansas paying the remaining 30,000. The money would be paid out of our special equipment account that has a current unencumbered balance of $1,891,051.79. Because of the age of the old Case tractor, I did a little, little figuring, just on diesel fuel alone, the Case tractor currently uses 3,600 gallon a year. With the, with the new technologies, the new tractor running the same hours would use 2,400 gallon of fuel, and what we're paying for fuel prices, that's about $5,600 a year. So over time, that's, that's quite a bit of savings. And those are hours that the tractor will get used every year because we use to mow. And I just wanted to get the commissioners' thoughts on this plan and whether we should apply for the funding.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
Darren, going back to the two photos of the tractors that were going to be replaced?
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna, can, can we, that one, we're going to put on Purple Wave?
Yes.
And that one, the red one?
The red one will be destroyed.
And you're saying that that yellow one has more value than that red one?
Well, I would take a chance. The, the yellow one is a 1969 John Deere industrial tractor that we do have a cab for, and if you put it on Purple Wave, and you get the right two people, you know, several years ago, we had an old tractor, and it, it went for $60,000.
Why, why would that same thought or not apply to the red one? I mean, the red, what, that's a what?
You know, I checked.
Twenty-year-old tractor?
I, I did check use prices through Richie Auction. They sell iron, big iron and tractors, and that particular model of tractor with low hours around 2,000 goes for about $20,000, and that's, that's with low hours, that's with 2,000 hours. This one has 9,000 hours on it. So if, even if you were to get the, the $20,000, there's still even $10,000 on the table. Does that make any sense to you?
Not really.
I'm not following it, for sure.
The, the value of this to us right now guaranteed is $30,000 if we get the grant funding, because...
Okay.
You see, you see what I mean?
You're weighing, you're, you're weighing sell price versus grant price.
Yes, yes.
So the $30,000 that the state's gonna pay is only if we destroy this tractor?
Yes, sir.
Well, it boils down to, in, in your estimation, that old yellow 69 is worth more on the market than what this 2003 is.
It could be. If you get the two right bidders bidding on old tractors, it, it very well could be. It's, it's a, a little gamble over a little guarantee.
Where that one brought...
Yeah, a little gamble over a little guarantee, and that's, that's why I wanted to come to the commission.
But either way, one of them has to go, and, and that gets us the $30,000 to offset... But either way, one of them has to go, and that gets us the $30,000 to offset. And we'll take two tractors out of the fleet and replace it with one.
Yes, sir.
And you won't be coming back to us next year asking for another tractor.
Not a tractor, no.
One of the things that really, I'm just gonna ask, is that right now you have two tractors to do two different jobs.
Mm-hmm.
Do you run the sheep foot at the same time of year that you're, this is supposed to be out mowing all the time? Isn't that when you're supposed to be running the sheep foot too?
This tractor here is used to mow our yard and our facilities only. And that can be scheduled.
Okay, I'm sorry, a little bit ago, I thought you said out.
When it has time, and the guy, he does go out and mow the right-of-way on Waterwell Road and little things like that.
Okay, gotcha.
It would be a scheduling thing.
And that would have been my question, is why do we need a tractor just to mow the yard?
It's 50 acres.
We got how many, seven tractors out mowing ditches?
Yeah.
And one or two of those come back to the yard every day?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, but there's no need. Did you just say there's no need? Or there's still a need?
There's still a need, but it can be supplemented with the other ones that we rent. That's correct.
And we currently rent how many?
We currently rent six tractors.
Six.
Which makes more sense, excuse me, Mike.
No, I was just thinking out loud also. Go ahead.
It just makes more sense to have one tractor, I'm agreeing with that.
And the difference.
The other ones were things that were left over over time.
And the difference between the lease and purchase, you still feel is?
It is. In fact, I did, just looked at that this year. We spend about $70,000, $70,000 to $75,000 leasing these tractors, whereas to purchase six of them would be about three-quarters of a million dollars. And they only last 10 years, so it's working out. And when they break, someone comes fixes them.
Right on.
Well, we're getting away from what we're talking about here, but on that, the ditch mowers that we rent, those are by the hour, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
So if they sit, they're parked, it's raining out, we're not paying anything for those tractors.
Correct.
Or the operator.
Correct.
And the only way you can get the grant money is to have ownership of the tractors, is that correct?
Yes.
Alright, questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
I think it's just information.
This is, I'm sorry.
I think it's just.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is an informational item.
Yeah.
Alright, I hope they gave you some guidance then.
It does. Well, I mean, hang on just a second, but informational briefing, does that mean that you're gonna go ahead and do this?
Well, just looking for a consensus, you know, before I send in the grant, see if you're all on board with the project, because it's not really a good look if you apply for a grant, get it?
And then when the grant comes back, then we have to act, is that correct?
The action will be for the purchase of the tractor.
There'll be an RFA?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm supportive. Yep, go for it.
Likewise.
Thanks, sir. Have a good day.
You too.
Alright, item number two.
Engineering, October Quarterly Report 2022-35 with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I'm here, yeah, to give my update from July to October of this year. So I'll just start off with the items that we've accomplished so far in that period. So for our hot mix overlay and patching projects, and those are, we pulled up our Roden Bridge map. And so this is gonna be the black line and kind of half, the small half-black circles on the map. So Ohio Street is completed, so it's got the overlay. We did some crack repairs on that one, and the shouldering is done on that one as well. Waterwell Road, we've got two sections, one section east of I-135 and one section west. Those are both completed for the overlay except for the shouldering. And then we had a couple small projects on Fallen Road and Meere Road, and those are complete as well. Moving on to South Old Highway 81, and so on the map, that's an orange line. This is where we did a three-foot widening project, and then once the widening was completed, we placed a two-inch overlay on top of it. The widening and overlay is complete. The contractor still needs to do a couple asphalt approaches on there, and then we need to shoulder that. Our bituminous crack seal, that's a red line on the map, so the only road that's been completed on this is Headville Road. And then finally, our bituminous chip seal, and that's the blue line on the map. Circle C was the contractor who was awarded that project, and they have completed this project for around $882,000. So moving on to the stuff that we're working on for, I'll just talk about our, the first one is our span bridge projects, and this is a 180-foot reinforced concrete hot slab. We haven't had much, there's not much of an update on this project. It's still preliminary plans are done, right-of-way and utilities are done. But really, we're looking for, to complete the design next year with a construction probably is gonna be in the late 2024 to 2025 timeframe. For reinforced concrete box projects, those are the light blue circles on the map. We were working on a package of seven sites around the county. We're currently in the process of obtaining all of the right-of-way, both permanent and temporary, as well as moving utilities. As soon as that's complete, we'll be able to get that project out for a bid. And again, because of the construction environment now, you know, it's gonna be getting very, very difficult to get contractors interested in our projects, even the one that's, we've been having building, you know, these projects for a long time. And so in order to get interest, we gotta give big windows. And so I'm looking at this next round of boxes to possibly even be built in 2024. That's just kind of the environment that we're dealing with right now. Donmar and Waterwell Road improvements. This is a project right there at the intersection, but it does include four reinforced concrete boxes on the project and then road improvements. And so the road improvements are gonna be, you know, from that intersection of Donmar and Waterwell, you know, half a mile north, a half a mile east, and a half a mile south. Reese Construction was awarded the project for $894,500, and we're looking at a construction timeframe in late of next year. For hot mix overlay and patching, we still do have a couple areas of distressed pavement around the county that we want them to take care of. These are usually a couple hundred feet long. And so we've got one of those on Soderberg Road. And then finally, to complete this, this project, a contractor's gotta go back and shoulder all of the roads that they overlaid, except for Ohio. Ohio Street's completed. For our bituminous crack seal, you know, I said earlier here that we just did, Headville Road is completed, and so pavement pros, who's awarded the project, will still need to finish the rest of the roads on the map. And this is, this needs to be completed by December 9th of this year. For aggregate shouldering, that's the green line on the maps. So we went around and kind of evaluated all of the asphalt roads, and I've identified 32 miles of road where we just need to do some asphalt shouldering on the existing road, and that's the only work that's gonna be done. We put a, some specs together, and we're gonna open bids on November 7th for that. Next, I'll move on to our FEMA Section 428 projects. And there's six of these projects that's included in this, but what I've done is we bundled them together to really, we're looking at three contracts. The first contract is a roadway realignment project, and so those locations are Cunningham Road, south of Stimel. Got Gypson Valley Road, north of Crawford, and then the intersection of Stimel and Jasper. MOM Construction was awarded the project for about $241,000, and they actually started work on Cunningham yesterday. So we're hoping that they can get this project done in less than two weeks. And then, because really all we're talking about is, you know, grading up a new gravel road. And so it shouldn't take them very long. Once they're done with that, they'll move to Stimel and Jasper, and once that one's done, they'll move to Gypson Valley and have that wrapped up. Then we got a project on Fallen Road. It's a half a mile east of Burma Road, and that's where we're gonna replace a drainage structure with another reinforced concrete box. You know, we're raising the road up, you know, two feet in some places, so it's a fairly significant amount of grading on that. Reese Construction was a low bid for about 200, sorry, $547,000. And the construction on that's gonna happen in the latest winter and in the spring of 2023. With the asphalt pavement, you know, there's some limitations on when they can build things, and so that's why we gotta really push it off into next year. And then the last contract that I'm working on, it's a roadway improvement project that's Gypson Valley Road, north of K-4, and then Kingman Road, just east of the city of Gypson. We've had the plans done for this project. We're not buying any right-of-way, we're really moving utilities, which is kind of a unique project for us, because it seems like that's what we're having to do on every project. But I'm looking at having a bid opening in mid-December. I'm working with the Kansas Department of Emergency Management to go through FEMA to try to get a project extension approved on that. So for FEMA, each one of these projects has to be completed within four years. And so, and I'm trying to explain to them that, you know, again, the nature of the construction environment now, we can get better prices if we allow contractors more time. And so I'm working with them to try to get an extension till November of next year, and that'll allow whatever contractor's awarded this project a lot longer timeframe to get the project done. And again, it'll be like all the other projects, you know, once they start, they'll have so many working days to complete it. So I'm hoping we can, I can get a yea or an aye on the time extension, and then whenever I get that answer, I'll get this project out for bid. Moving on to our pipelining projects, so we've identified 15 sites on Brookville Road and State Street. On the map, those are the green circles with the stars inside of the circles. Mayor Specialty Services was the low bid, and they were awarded a contract for about $424,000. And what this Mayor Specialty Services, they're gonna utilize a PVC liner instead of a, like last year, it was a fiberglass resin liner, and so this one's gonna be a PVC liner. And then with three of them, it's gonna be a centrifugally cast concrete liner on that. So there, and the anticipated work is to start in the spring of next year. Next, I've got just a couple projects, KDOT projects, that's around the county, that I was just gonna kind of give you an update on. The first one is the, there's a bridge at Shipton Road and K-143. L&amp;M was awarded this project, and I called Kurt, oh, it's been a couple weeks ago, but they're looking at a mid-November timeframe to start that work, and so it's, mid-November is gonna be here really quick, so you can anticipate some work going on in that area pretty soon. And then the next one is a K-4 reconstruction from Smokey Hill River Bridge to Kip, to Kip Road, sorry, Kip Road. So it's, they assigned a schedule which has a letting date on it, but really, that's just for the design progress of it. So for the design schedule, it has a letting date of March 2024, so probably with possibly some construction in 2024 to 2025. But again, that's just the design schedule, that could change, you know, and I'll try to keep you up to speed whenever I get new information on that. The next one is the, there's a bridge on I-135 and Assaria Road. They're working on that one, and that doesn't have a letting date scheduled, as well as on K-4, just east of South Old Highway 81. There's a bridge right there that they don't have a schedule on that as well. As far as budget updates for the contractual asphalt account, and so here we're dealing with our hot mix overlays, our chip seal, crack seal, and shouldering. I'm working with a budget a little over $3 million. And where I come up with that is there is a $2.5 million asphalt contractual budget line item. And then I'm using about $244,000 from our 127 account, that's from our federal fund exchange. I'm using $200,000 out of the 127 from our Kansas local bridge improvement program reimbursement money that'll be coming in, and then there's another $100,000 to cover costs. So our construction costs for this year, again, we haven't completed everything, so it's still an estimate, but it's gonna be around $2.8 million. And this will leave about $244,000 left over for a cash carryover for next year. Our 125 account, that's our special bridge fund, it's also called the 2 mil, it has an unencumbered balance of a little over $720,000. Our 124, special road construction, or 1 mil, that has an unencumbered balance of about $1.3 million. And then our 127 account, our special highway improvement, has about $1.9 million in it. So any questions?
Questions? Where we at on the paint striping with all the overlays that's been completed?
I don't know. To be honest with you, you know, so that's the, you know, maintenance, you know, that's the one task that we perform in-house, you know, and so, and I haven't, I haven't talked to our, really, our shop, our, and our shop guys, sorry, our assigned guys, it's signing and striping. I haven't, I haven't gotten an update on them and when they plan. They've done some, some roads out there, and I know some still needs work performed on yet, but I couldn't tell you right now.
You tried, thank you.
I tried real hard.
Any other questions? Thank you, Justin.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just glad to see you keeping busy.
Oh, very busy.
Good job.
Item number three.
Discussion of Future Meeting Agenda Format 2022-37 with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Morning, Philip.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I mentioned a couple weeks ago that I thought we needed to have a conversation about the meeting structure, and I think the last two items are actually a perfect illustration of the problem, not that it's a big problem, but the issue, which is if you think about the item that Justin just presented, it was really, the purpose of that item was to just inform the Commissioners and the public of status of different projects versus the item that Darren presented immediately prior to that, was really trying to generate some discussion and get some feedback from the commission. Not a formal vote, but some consensus, some discussion about pros and cons. And so those are really sort of two different types of items, and they're also very different than the study session that we'll be having next Tuesday, where we go out to a location and actually have an intensive discussion about one particular project. And next week, of course, it will be the jail project. And so in trying to, you know, promote continuous improvement and refine our meeting process, I had a discussion with the department heads about their thoughts on this, and we came up with a possibility, which is attachment to, to this item, of having informational items be really informational, like what Justin just presented, and then add a new section called concept discussion, where we would have those more conversational items like Darren's. And department heads recommended that we try and move those items over to 107B, so we have more of a conversational type of a setup. Of course, we could still broadcast from 107B, it is set up to do that if the commission wishes. So that is, that's the thought, and much like Darren's item, I would welcome some discussion from you all, whether you like that plan, don't like that plan, thoughts and feedback.
Well, just off the top of my head, I guess I'll go first. This would, this concept items would be on our agenda. We would have action, informational, concept, correct?
That's right. That's the proposal, anyway.
Okay, and for the concept, we would leave this and go into 107B and have that meeting and take the public. and have that meeting and take the public in there with us and...
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's a separate meeting, it's just a, yeah. We would recess, sort of like we do for executive sessions, but of course, the public would be there. That's, of course, if the commission is amenable, we could have those concept discussions in 107, just like Darren's item that he just presented to you. But I think it would make more of a mental break in the meeting to know, okay, here are the ones that we just want to provide you information, and here are the ones that we actually want to have a conversation about.
I would venture to say that more than 90% of the public's viewing of our meetings is not in person. It is through the cable system. And I noticed that the city has their exec, their, their informational and, and study sessions right here in this room. And, and I would suggest that we don't leave this room either. I don't, just the, just the perception kind of bothers me that we're going in there. I, I've watched meetings on TV from that room, and they are not nearly as clear. You can't see everyone. Some people have their backs to the camera. I, I mean, I'm okay with the, the, the concept discussion, but I, I don't see a reason to, to have it somewhere other than right here in this room for the public's perception.
And Phil, I have always appreciated our 107Bs sessions in the past. It seems like it's more of an informal setting. It's more relaxed. Department heads can, don't have to worry about it being broadcast. And I, I would like, I would like to go back to that. I'd like your thoughts and your ideas here, so.
Phil, I do get the, the mentality of, of that change of, of atmosphere to, to, to go into some other setting and more, more of a neutral sharing of information and such. I, I do believe it does need to be telecast. And, and of course, it is available for the public to sit in too. So I would encourage that also, but I, I understand the concept of the concept. But we could try it, get input from the public, and I don't know. Let's hear from the rest.
I just, I just want to mention is that it's like, I, I can't see moving from here, this setup right here to 107B, if we're going to be televised, if we're going to have the public joining us, why would we move from here to in there, just to be moving? I, I, to me, is like, if we just get up and take a five-minute break and come right back in here and sit down, it, it's the same scenario. I mean, if you're going to be televised, we might as well use this, might as well have the public still sitting here, instead of just moving to another room. I just don't see any benefit in that at all. So that's my, that's my take on it.
I, I like that you're separating out informational from conceptual, very much like that, because it's almost like an expectation. Okay, now, you know, Darren, I, I just listened to it, and I was just like, well, it's just informational, but, but I get your point about it being conceptual. Oh, he wanted some feedback, and it's an expectation from us that, okay, we're, we're separating that. I think it can happen out here. I, I get moving into the other room, and yeah, maybe, you know, maybe we talk a little bit more in that room or not, but, you know, although, although this, this meeting is open to the public, very few show up, so it would have to be televised if we did move, just because that's just how people, that's just how the public gets the information. But I would like to just stay in here.
I, I believe you got a consensus there.
Sounds like it, thank you.
A majority.
A majority, yeah. Well, yeah, and, and everything's subject to change, and see how it works. I, I appreciate separating those things. It is important that, that our department heads hear from us. It gives them guidance of, of are we going down the right path? Are we doing the right things? Is, is this your mindset also? So I see the, I see the merit of it.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I appreciate you bringing something like that to us, because I would have never thought of that, so.
Well, and I have to give credit to our department heads. I did not come up with that. I believe actually the county clerk, I think, came up with that title, so.
Attaboy. Something you learned through your association, I'm sure.
Can we get this lady happy face?
Here's, going through our packet, page 45, is that, oh, that says current. Here's a possible.
Yeah, I was just trying to illustrate the, the difference between the way the meetings are currently structured and the way they could be structured. Obviously, we'll take out that 107B piece.
Okay, cool. Yeah. Cool, cool. Anything else? Looks good. All right, we will go to...
Mr. Chair, there was a member of the public that raised their hand in the Zoom meeting, if that's available for public comment.
Sure, I'll hear from anyone.
They did lower their hand, but I figured I'd give them the opportunity if...
You want to put your hand back up? Maybe we answered their question.
I've asked them to unmute, so if they want...
Evidently, we did. Uh, item number four.
Quarterly budget update, 10/25/22, 2022-36 with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
So I have the, sort of the same distinction as Darren and Justin's items. So the first item there, we had a little discussion on this one, is more informational for the commission and the public. This is our quarterly budget update. And I will say there is some variation at the department level. We have a few departments that are expected to go over budget, particularly the coroner's office. But at the fund level, all of our funds are looking good through the first three quarters. But as I noted in July, at the mid-year budget report, things are definitely slowing down with the notable exception of sales tax. Sales tax through the first three quarters is running about half a million dollars ahead of where we were last year, and last year was a record year. So I think that positions us well. As we end '22 and begin '23, we're going to be in a strong financial position. But I am starting to be concerned about the broader economic indicators and what that portends for the future. So I think as we start looking at the next budget cycle in February, March, we will have some conversations about what we can actually sustain going forward. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have a dollar amount on the coroner's budget that, that you think it will exceed or where it's at? And follow up on that. I guess you'll have to remind me, the, the coroner is on a, a contractual set amount? How, how, how do we exceed that?
So there's the coroner, coroner, the guy, right? We pay him a set amount each month, and so that's not over. But it's the autopsies and cremations and all the other things associated with that function that vary from year to year. So when we have more unattended deaths in a year, then that goes up. And so this year, I believe it's about $10,000 over budget. I will note that we expected that, and we did increase the budget for 2023. So hopefully, we can get it back in line next year.
Thank you.
That brings me to a question. In trying to remember how we did the budget with the coroner, there was just one, one line item, if I remember right. I, I think we should separate that out next time. Salary versus operating expenses for that department. And that would bring to, you know, mind the question that Commissioner Wees has there. And we'd be able to tell that. Does that not make sense, or can we do that?
Uh, well, it's not actually salary. It would be a contractual line, because he's a contractor, not an employee. And then all of the other contractual expenses, like for the funeral homes, those would also be contractual. So it wouldn't, yes, we could divide them up, and we could see it better in the financial system, but it would still all be contractual. So I'm not sure it would do quite what you're envisioning, but we can certainly look at it.
Well, you, you answered my question, that we would be better, we would better able to see it if it were split out, so.
When, um, when you talk about revenues that are lagging, you're not talking about sales tax, you're not talking about property tax. Are you talking about expo monies?
User fees.
Okay, user fees, gas.
Yeah, so gas taxes running a little bit behind where it was. Registered deeds fees, as I noted, are running a little behind. Delinquent property taxes are running behind where they were. Property taxes are running, the, the collections of property taxes are running just slightly, talking fractions of a percent behind where they were. But all of those add up in the aggregate to revenues just lagging where they were this time last year.
Okay. So it's just a snapshot of today versus a year ago, is all it is?
Yeah, and I looked back.
Much weight in the fourth quarter.
Yeah, most of our revenues actually occur in the first part of the year. So I don't expect revenues to catch up meaningfully in the fourth quarter. Expenditures often catch up in, in the fourth quarter, but revenues typically do not. Had another thought there and lost it, sorry.
That's fine. I have that happen all the time. Any other questions of the administrator? All right, thank you, Phil. Uh, number five.
Commissioners comments.
Hearing none, item number six.
Do you mind if I make an announcement?
Sure.
About election time? So we started voting in our office early yesterday. We do have a board that works in our office, so we have election workers that are there, ready to help anyone that comes in. We had 309 people come in. So we are open eight to five, Monday through Friday, for voting. We will also be open on Saturday, November 5th, for voting as well, from nine to four. And you can still apply for advanced ballot by mail. So if you need one mailed to you, just call our office, or, or you can go online and get that application, so.
Very good.
I, I have a question, it should have been, I, I just didn't ask it of our administrator, because we were talking about the budget. But I, next week's meeting, if I heard him, heard him say correctly, is going to be held at the jail site. As, as we are having a meeting, I just wonder if everyone out there at the jail site is prepared for the, the possibility of, of quite a few public people showing up because of our public meeting? How are we going to handle that? Or are they, are, is Turner, or are we prepared?
We've already had that discussion with Turner, and they, they are aware, they have a rather large meeting room out there on site, and so, yeah, they're, they understand what they're getting themselves into.
So we're not going to tour the jail, then?
Uh, we will, but we'll, we'll start...
That's the part I'm talking about, is if we are touring the jail and...
Is to bring your own hard hat, or?
I, I'm, well, I mean, I think it's a legitimate question.
Yeah, if they got the logistics worked out, that they can accommodate the public, that's great.
Yep, we, we hear on it.
I think you're, I think we're, we're, I would expect a pretty good-sized crowd.
Any other announcements? I will mention, I attended the KAC Monday through Wednesday of last week, and then had a SKEDO meeting on Thursday. Friday afternoon, went to the first Kansas Wesleyan University Veterans Recognition Event. It was very well-attended and, and was put on very, very professional, and I'm glad I did take that in, so.
And I'll also comment, I'll just comment that as I, I attended the Community Corrections Board Meeting on Tuesday, and it's like, I was just shocked and, and really pleased with all the, the great news that, that they had in their, their talk about how things are going and, and what's working and what's not. It was a great, great meeting, so I just wanted to mention that.
I think we have one more piece of business to take care of.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff would request that the commission recess into executive session under the non-elected personnel exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss a department head evaluation for seven minutes and reconvene in this room at 10:10.
So moved.
Say it. Move to second, we move into recess to executive session under the non-elected personnel exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss evaluation for seven minutes and to reconvene at 10:10. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, we're in executive session. All right, it is 10:10 and we're, came out of executive session. I will, uh, say no action was taken. So I would, uh, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
So moved, second, we adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.